Its invocation would be given by Michael Walker. He's the Minister of Music with Rivertown Community Church. And I'll ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for tonight. Lord, I thank you for all the people that have gathered here. And I pray that you would give our City Council and our Mayor wisdom and insight for all the decisions that they make. And we pray that you would continue to guide our leaders as they lead our community that we hold so dear. We thank you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Walker. Oh, is it Reverend? Is it Reverend Walker? Council, first order of business would be to, if you would like to walk on the item that was proposed to be walked on by Mr. Peterson, prior to, we can add this as item 28. This would be, the resolution would be, be it resolved by the governing body that Mayor Wilson has authorized to execute the contract for geotechnical services, geotechnical testing and engineering services for the electrical transfer relocation site at Nichols and Young Street in the amount of $2,760.
I make a motion, we amend the agenda accordingly.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, I don't think I said aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes. The agenda is amended. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting, the agenda meeting and the work session that was held on March the 25th. Council, do you have any additions, deletions, or changes you'd like to make to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
As submitted.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number two on tonight's agenda, we have a request by the Mayor to amend the minutes from the February 25th meeting by adding the Mayor's report. There's no formal resolution that I've received for this. Kind of new territory here. The way I understand it, the minutes are supposed to reflect the business that was transacted in the council meeting. However, I do also respect the Mayor's request to put her report in there. So, Council, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna open up the table to you and ask you what you think about this. I have some mixed emotions about the Mayor's report, especially from that night and why they need to be added to the minutes because it wasn't official, you know, it wasn't action that was taken, it wasn't a resolution, or it's not pertaining to an ordinance or any other actionable item. So, Council, I'd like to get your input on this. And then the other question is if we were to amend the minutes, we would actually need a resolution to amend those minutes by adding the Mayor's report. Jay, you're a lawyer, you wanna tackle this one?
I don't know that being a lawyer makes me more or less qualified to talk about it, but...
I know, but it was a good reason to put it off on you.
I appreciate that. Do we put Council comments in the minutes? Lisa?
No verbatim.
Just kind of a general, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't have any problem doing Mayor's report the same way we do Council comments. I mean, if it's just sort of a general summary of what's put in there, I don't see any reason we couldn't do that for the Mayor's report also. I mean, I don't, I don't think, you know, I mean, if the purpose of the whole thing is to kind of just...
So, was that done, Lisa? Is there a mention of the Mayor's report in there?
Yes, there is.
I don't have, we don't have, I don't think we have them in here, do we?
Go back in time.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have it.
Same thing with y'all.
I think, can you look at, can you look it up on your MacBook?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. My MacBook decided to stay home tonight. Looks like it's in there. Looks like the same summary of, the same type of summary that's in there for the Council comments is in there for the Mayor's comments. It's not a verbatim, but it's, nothing ever is on that. So, Clerk, I'll ask you, if we were to amend the minutes, do we need to go back and amend our meeting agenda to add that item and then add that item to tonight's agenda?
I'm fine with it just being from this point forward, and I think I did email that in response to having to edit. I mean, that's, I didn't say to have a resolution and go backwards. I just said that since I read my report, I'd like to submit it into the records.
Yeah. I don't particularly have a problem with that, Council.
I don't have any problem with that.
Anybody have a problem with that? I don't think we have to take action on that. We'll just ask the Clerk to just attach the report.
Okay.
Okay, is that it? All right, we'll move on. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Our Police Department has seen a great deal of activity lately, but in a good way. We want to welcome Officer Joshua Crier, who came to us from Calhoun County. And I will say that my glasses are not working, so hopefully I can get through this, because it's very, very blurry for some reason. And congratulations to Trent Colley, Eric Wallace, and Dustin Holmes for graduating from the Northeast Alabama Law Enforcement Academy. I mean, that's kind of unprecedented to have this many people come from that. And then congratulations to Trent, I mean, to Dakota Morgan and Charles Spiegel. They're our next two to go to the academy. And Mark Eubanks is returning to law enforcement with us. We are also pleased to introduce to you the newest member of our Fair Hope Police Department family, Kumba, partners with Corporal Daniel Rada, and we are told he has already made significant drug fines. The Rotary Club of Fair Hope each year honors a member of our police force with the Blake Bauer Memorial Service Award. This tribute honors the strong work ethic, decency, kindness, and integrity of an officer. This year Corporal Daniel Rada was awarded this distinguished honor. In the 2018, Corporal Rada had 55 physical arrests with a total of 129 felony charges and 84 misdemeanor arrests. Daniel also serves as a K-9 handler, Taser instructor, and firearms instructor. Daniel sets the example for hard work and determination, yet he is known throughout the force for his decency, kindness, integrity, principles, and the way in which he treats everyone with respect. We are proud to have a man like Daniel on the police force. The Fair Hope Intermediate School this year selected school resource officer David Miller and crossing guard Doug Manningsman as their hometown heroes. I'm not sure if we have a picture of both of them, but the students completed the 10-week Super Citizen Program by choosing heroes who embody the traits of amazing citizens, and they choose well. Welcome to our officers, and congratulations to all of whom serve our Police Department with distinguished experience. We have what I believe is the best Police Department we've had in a very, very long I am thrilled to be able to announce that the K-1 Community Engagement Meeting held last Wednesday was very successful. About 100 people came together and shared ideas for the property with a long-term thought process setting a viable vision for the year 2030. They considered what they liked and didn't like about Fair Hope and how that property could be used to exemplify or correct those situations. How to finance their ideas was also discussed, and they built a vision consensus each table, which was collaborated at the end of that meeting into four visions and vision statements that will be part of a citizen survey that Sherri Lee mentioned in the work session. In addition, we had a graphic artist at the meeting who graphically recorded the conversations that were heard around the tables, and the artwork is now hanging in the library. I encourage you to go see it, and there's also a suggestion box, which we will also add to any of these comments to the overall input. Channel dredging at Fly Creek begins this week. The contractor mobilized this past Saturday, and this is a joint venture between the city and the yacht club. And you must ask permission from M&amp;N, that's M as in Mary, and N as in Nancy, dredging in order to pass through the work area. This is for your safety as well as for protecting the equipment in use. The marinas remain open during the 30 days, while this is happening, so you can use the fuel dock. And I'm happy to report also that the drudger will be using the fuel dock to the tune of up to 800 gallons a day for the next 30 days, and that wasn't budgeted, so that was good.
We'll find a way.
You're gonna hold us to that number next year.
Right, exactly. We are celebrating Fair Hope's 125th anniversary this year, and we'll share our plans with you on how that develops, because we're gonna do a lot of stuff that leads up to the November 15th birthday. Farmer's Market opens in two weeks. The Easter Bunny will be visiting the Welcome Center next Saturday from 10 to 12. I'm sure there will be a lot of picture-taking. Andrea Smith of the Baldwin County Child Advocacy hopefully is in the audience, wonderful, with Care House, and I'm going to give a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month.
My name is Andrea Smith, and I'm the Prevention Coordinator at Baldwin County Child Advocacy Center, also known as the Care House. Thank you for making this proclamation here today, in which the City of Fair Hope belongs with Baldwin County Child Advocacy Center to prevent child abuse. We are blessed to celebrate this year being Baldwin County Child Advocacy's 30 years of making a difference in helping families in Baldwin County. This agency offers many services to seek justice and help children of abuse. These services include forensic interviews, counseling sessions, a family advocate, and criminal justice support, to little or no cost to the families. Baldwin County Child Advocacy also provides programs such as prevention services and transparenting classes among others. Last year, the agency provided services to 450 victims, 46 being from the City of Fair Hope. This agency also provides prevention services to the community and in the schools. These programs include internet safety, a someone-to-talk-to puppet show, and a program for adults called Darkness to Light. Of 8,710 people contacted with prevention services in the year 2018, 1,189 people were from the City of Fair Hope. Again, we appreciate the City of Fair Hope for all that they do and in aligning with us in preventing child abuse in this area. Thank you.
This is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month in April, whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on the involvement among people throughout the community. Statistics show that children who are abused and neglected are escalating each year, and affected children abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnership created among social service agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I, Karen Wilson, as Mayor of Fair Hope, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Fair Hope, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, and businesses to participate in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Thank you. We're gonna get a, yeah, we'll get a picture.
I wear a glove because that's the color of Prevention Month.
I knew that.
Thank you so much. And last, I want to bring your attention to Agenda Item 15 tonight. The item authorizes Council President Burrell and Councilman Conyers to negotiate all leases in the best interest for the city. It has been edited. But this resolution is a follow-up to one passed earlier in our term for the Treasurer to do the sole negotiating for this and insurance. It is yet another slap in the face and another sign of the level of distrust Council has in me, the Mayor you elected. From the onset of my term in office, Councilman Burrell has been campaigning for more and more power, and in doing so, has been the root of the conflict that the City Council and I have had. Council's role is to approve the leases and financial decisions for the city, and because of this, Council will always be a part of the process. It simply doesn't make sense to cut the Mayor out of the process. Early in our term, the Council President put together a resolution that our appointed City Treasurer solely handle leases, insurance, and other items without input from the Mayor, which has resulted in many issues. As Mayor of the City of Fair Hope, negotiating leases and insurance are tasks in overseeing the business of the city. In that capacity, as in all others, I do my due diligence because we've seen and paid the price for what happens when these steps aren't taken. Our former City Treasurer left money on the table when negotiating the AT&amp;T lease, in addition to a long-term health insurance debacle caused by cutting me out. Now that we are almost three-quarters into our term, I've proven that the city has significantly improved its financial standing. To continue this practice should offend anyone who has had confidence in me from the beginning and those who have gained confidence because of the clear progress. While I work hard to hire people with the utmost talent and qualifications, I did not believe then or now it is in the best interest of this city to have one person negotiating nor approving this with two Council members. As a Mayor, I would negotiate the lease in question with, which now is stating 5G service, with the Electric Superintendent, Jeff, our IT Director, in addition to someone who is familiar with 5G and doing contracts with this type of engagement. It's always taken steps to bring in the most qualified people to help make decisions. Department heads, experts, contract attorneys. I have done this because our city deserves that fiscal oversight, and the results are showing that it is paying off. The city in the best financial position it has ever been, thanks to working with department heads to cut wasteful spending, reducing the city liability, investing in ways to become more efficient, and hire expertise to fill in holes. Council President is a designation that should be shared equally among Council members throughout a four-year term, like the way the Planning Commission is an alternating position. In the role of Council President for almost seven years, Councilman Burrell has monopolized the position and aggrandized it into being something it is not. By continuing, but continually holding a position that should be shared equally among each one of these capable men elected to serve the city, he has pushed forward his own personal agenda. This is certainly not how a Council President should act, and I would hope that anyone running for a Council position in the future understands and expects to serve as Council President in an alternating position. Our current Councilmen know this fact, and it would be refreshing and beneficial to the city to have one or more step up to serve as Council President the rest of this term. I can assure you, things like this would not continue, and relationships would improve immensely. Since I have implored several of Council to do so with no results, perhaps citizens can help. If one refuses this leadership role intended for all Council, we need to make sure we get this type of leadership in 2020, and that's all.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. All right, next item on the agenda is public participation for agenda items. Item six is its own public hearing, so if you want to speak to item six, you'll wait for that item to come up. But if you want to speak to items seven through 28, you can come to the podium and state your name and address to the record, please. Okay, I'll close public participation on agenda items, and I'll remind everyone that you will have an opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to address the Council on matters that may or may not have been on the agenda. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm not gonna talk about it too much, because I was late to the party, and I want to give everybody else who was there the whole time an opportunity to speak on it. But I want to congratulate the Volunteer Fire Department on yet another great success in their cook-off. I was fortunate enough to make it in time for at least one category of judging, and probably grateful I didn't, I wasn't here the whole time with how much it's grown in the three years that they've had it. What did we go, from 12 the first year to 14 to 26 entries this year? So, by the time I got there for round three, the rest of the Council had consumed around 52 portions, and then had another 26 when I got there, and some of them looked a little green. But they battled through and got the job done, and it was a great time, great turnout. We appreciate everything you do, and I'm glad it was a success for you guys also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start with that. Thank y'all for the Volunteer Fire Department. Event was fantastic. I'll admit, I was dying. I had to go home right after that. There was no way I could stick around and enjoy myself. I was beyond full, so thank you for that. I've got meetings scheduled for this month for committees. Got a Historic Preservation Committee Wednesday at 9:30, Environmental Advisory Board Friday at 3:00 PM, and the Library meets Monday, a week from now, at 4:00 PM. Also wanted to say, we had a great turnout at Civic Center, a lot of good input, a lot of good ideas, just wanted to, and that was about the K-1 Center discussion. And I just want to say that for those that couldn't attend, you will certainly have another opportunity to voice your opinion. You can also always reach out to Mayor or Council members individually, but really good turnout, and I know that was a long meeting and it wouldn't work for everyone's schedule, so certainly stay tuned for other opportunities to speak about the K-1 Center. Lastly, Officer Miller, are you still outside? I know he stuck his head in just a second ago to wave at everybody, and I just thought if he was still here, we ought to get him in and give him a round of applause, because I don't think anyone saw him in the back of the room, but... I know the kids at the school just think the world of Officer Miller, and I just think that he deserves a round of applause for being the hometown hero.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
I'm just glad that the Chief and y'all gave me an opportunity to go out to the school to try to make a difference in their life. I try to do that every day. I'm at the high school now, and I just try to put positive things in their minds, let them know how life is outside the school, and make good choices and things, so I appreciate y'all giving me that opportunity to do that, to be a positive role model in their life.
Well, you do a great job, and I know, I see them smiling, giving you high fives around town whenever you're at the Mardi Gras Parade or anything like that, so thank you. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Miller. That's it.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I want to, again, reiterate, thank you to the Fire Department. You might need to look for some more volunteers for judging next year. I think it was around 82 ounces of meat that we tested, so quite full we left. And again, thanks to everybody that participated in the K-1 Roundtable, especially our own John Manos, who did the moderating. Thank you, John. And a little update on the Special Tax District. As you know, the Council passed a resolution unanimously in support of it. We've received over 200 signatures on a petition, so I'll be getting that information to the Baldwin County School Board later this week, in which hopefully they'll pass it on to the County Commission to set the referendum date in the end of September, so I'll keep you posted. That's it.
Thank you. Well, I always get to go last, and so I'm always the last to thank the Fire Department for the wonderful barbecue benefit that you guys threw Saturday before last. I will say that I did gain eight pounds that day, eight pounds. It was quite a feat, so anyway, Jay, next time, try to get there on time and save us some of those 78 bites of food, because, see, you don't just eat 78 bites, because if you get like a rib or a chicken wing that you like, you might eat two or three or four bites of those, so it's really a lot more. So, it was probably over 100, 120 ounces of meat there that we ate. But anyway, a wonderful time was had by all. Just to address the Mayor's comments, Mayor, I find it incredible that you take all of your time to chastise me. You did the previous, the February 25th meeting to chastise the City Attorney, always going so far as to ask the voters to replace me. I mean, you're literally campaigning on the dais. I find that incredible. The Agenda Item 15 that you spoke of was, that is actually not supposed to be all future leases. It was to negotiate some cell tower leases, and I know that you feel like a bad job was done prior to your being the Mayor, but I think that that lease was increased in value 300 or 400 percent, and there were several people involved with that. As if the Council authorizes me and Jimmy to negotiate the upcoming cell tower leases, I would wish you would think of that as just taking something off of your plate. I certainly don't want to negotiate all the leases for the city. I certainly don't have any personal gain. I don't understand the personal gain comment. There's no gain. I'm not in the cell tower business. My desire is to do the best for the City of Fair Hope, and I do have some experience in negotiating these and had a little bit of training in those, and so that's why when I asked who would do it in the absence of a Treasurer, we don't have a Treasurer right now, I thought that I'd be the next logical choice, and would certainly engage experts, and will engage the department heads. In fact, Wayne Dias and I were gonna sit down and talk about this very thing last week before his departure, but I had a meeting suddenly come up, and I missed it, so there will be discussions had with all sorts of experts, and I also asked Jimmy to join me on that, just to have another Council member to bounce thoughts and ideas off of. So, it's a pretty small matter to negotiate one of those leases. I don't see it as a, I don't see it as a power play or as anything else. And just so the public knows is that the City Council has the authority to ask anyone that they so choose. We could ask Santa Claus to negotiate our leases and come back to the Council for final approval. It's not uncommon. In fact, it's very, very common for committees to do that. It's very, very common for laypeople to do it. It's also very common for Council members to do it, so I don't find much of a big... it, so I don't find much of a big deal at all in trying to negotiate a cell tower lease. So with that, I'll close council comments, and I'll move on to a public hearing. This is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to rezon the property of the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation, Doris Calles, William Calles, Michael Hollis, and Leslie Calles from R2 medium-density single-family residential district to R3 high-density single-family residential district. This property is generally located on the north side of Morphe Avenue in Fairhope, Alabama. Mr. Jeffries.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor. As Councilman Burrell pointed out, this is a rezoning case, it was zoning case 19.01, the Hollis-Calles property. It's a rezoning of 4.3 acres from an R2 medium-density to an R3 high-density family single-residential district. The general location is the north side of Morphe Avenue, approximately 1,200 feet east of Bishop Road and 1,500 feet west of County Road 13, and it's on the southern terminus of Beecher Street, which is a private road. Some of the details of the applicant is Daniel Blackburn, on behalf of Doris Calle. Again, the total acreage is 4.3 acres. There's actually a total of nine lots, seven existing are undeveloped, and there are two developed lots that each have a single-family home on them currently. The allowable density that is proposed would be 5.58 units per acre would be the gross development. The allowable density of the current zoning district is 4.15. Now, the size of this lot, they wouldn't be able to accommodate that many if they were to request 23 lots, for example, the resulting density would be 5.35. The subdivision regulations do require for a dwelling count of anywhere from four to six units per acre that there is a required 20 percent green space for any type of development on that property, which would bring that, would force that density level further down. Case ZC 1901, it was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on the February 4th, 2019 meeting, and the analysis of the zoning criteria is contemplated in the zoning ordinance by Article 2.CE is on the next slide. Won't go over every one of those, I'm going to point out some of the major ones, that if you look on the, for the comprehensive plan, the subject property is located within an area of influence due to its location next to the Greeno Road Village Center there, it's .7 miles away from there, so it is contemplated by the comprehensive plan. Subject property's location to Greeno Road Village is shown on the expert on the upper right hand of your screen there, and on the bottom is the dimensions table for what is currently zoned to what's requesting for annexation. The character of the surrounding property and any pending development there, the property is going to be maintained, it's residential status, and the rezoning is not anticipated to have any major impact to the predominant residential character of the area that's currently, has R3 property that is currently surrounding it to the west side and to the northwest. That big portion that's already currently zoned R3 is currently a nursery, and then it has residential property to the north as well. And then going back to the previous slide, impacts on natural resources, subject property has already been disturbed with the two houses that are on there for it being an existing neighborhood, and there is no detriment to the surrounding area. So case ZC 1901 was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Staff recommends that item number six, Planning Commission ZC 1901, request to rezon from R2 medium-density to R3 high-density single-family be approved. I also wanted to point out that the Planning Commission also had some conditions related to their approval, and these recommendations stem from litigation that was on the property previously. Condition number one was that the property subject to the rezoning request lies immediately south of eight lots fronting Beecher Street owned by various members of the Faust family. For ease in reference, the eight Faust lots on Beecher Street depicted on the attached exhibit A are here and after referred to as the Faust Division, and the property leased by the Calles and Hollis families depicted on exhibit B, which is the southern portion, be referred to as the Calles Division. Condition number two is that the leases of the Calles Division agree that the rezoning can be granted based on the express condition that when developed, the rezoned property and lots will be accessed only from Morphe Avenue and not from Fairhope Avenue. If the currently owned lot that is within the Faust Division by Doris Faust, pin number 14655, is included in a future subdivision to be constructed on the Calles Division, this lot also shall have access from Morphe Avenue and not Fairhope Avenue. If the Doris Calles lot, pin number 14655, is not included and it remains part of the Faust Division, then it shall keep its access from Fairhope Avenue. And finally, condition number three is a lot and home leased in the Calles Division by Michael and Leslie Hollis currently has access from Fairhope Avenue, and it shall continue to have access from Fairhope Avenue in accordance with Beecher Street Common Road and Maintenance Agreement, and at such times that the home is demolished or removed in order to develop the lots within the Calles Division, access to this lot shall be only from Morphe Avenue and not Fairhope Avenue. And the gist of what those three conditions are saying, just to help clear that up, that was a lot of words. If you look on your screen, the northern half is a separate subdivision where I mentioned has that private Beecher Road coming into it, it's not maintained by the city, so in conclusion what the conditions are, is the new subdivision will have its access from the south and not use the private road that is on the Faust Division on the north. There is one property that is on the northeast corner of the Calles subdivision that is actually inside the Faust subdivision that's part of this rezoning, so the property is how they're accessing the lots currently are going to be found, but if there's some type of work redone or development done and houses tore down to be rebuilt or further development, then the entrance and access for those properties will be from the appropriate either Fairhope Avenue or Morphe Avenue. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, somebody introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you. When I open the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this rezoning, if you'll please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Would somebody like to speak on behalf of the owners?
I'm here, only a moment.
Okay, okay, great. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you. If you have no more questions, we'll let this lay over for final adoption until the next meeting. Continuing what we typically do with these. Okay, we'll move on. I'll close the public, you have to close the public hearing, didn't I?
Not yet.
Number seven is the final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, a request is on the property of the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation, Henry Brewster Jr. and Barbara White Brewster to R2 medium-density single-family residential district concurrent with annexation to the city of Fairhope. This property is generally located on the north side of Twin Beach Road between County Road 13 and Thompson Hall Road in Fairhope, Alabama. This was introduced at the March 25th city council meeting.
Good evening again. So here it's zoning change 19.02. This is the second reading for this conditional annexation. As you pointed out, the project acreage is 18.71 acres of unzoned Baldwin County, and they're requesting to go to R2 medium-density family residential. The property is located approximately 700 feet east of County Road 13, just north of Twin Beach, and is just south of a future thru street in the Sedgfield subdivision. And again, as staff always does for zoning change cases, we went through the zoning change criteria that is in there. I wanted to point out, item number three, consistent with the character of the surrounding property, there are 80-foot lots proposed in the current site plan that they introduced with the zoning change for this. They proposed to have a green belt that is separating the proposed development from the nearby Sedgfield subdivision to zoned R1, kind of helps mitigate the dissimilar lot sizes that are in Sedgfield, and Sedgfield does have some lots that are 95-foot wide and 100-foot wide, so there is a little bit of alteration in those. Compatibility analysis was performed on this. The proposed development density is 1.47 units per acre, when the proposed, of 28 total lots is what is proposed. The compatibility analysis showed that there was 2.3 acres in the surrounding area, so they're coming in considerably lower than what the surrounding property is. And part of this, as you can see on this, is the proposed plan that they have on the right of your screen. There is a waterway that comes through there, so after all this stream buffers and wetland buffers that have to be provided for, it limited, it limits the site to the actual buildable area that can be on there. Long Branch subdivision is the proposed. This is a picture of the future thru street on the south terminus of Barling Street where the subdivision would connect to. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission meeting of some of the trees that were in this area. Paul Merchant, the city horticulturist, went out, reviewed those trees, and the one tree that is kind of in the middle is not doing real well, and he proposed that it was going to be more detrimental to try to go around that tree. There's also a large 50-inch oak tree, if you try to go around, that you run into, that is in a lot better condition than what that tree is. The city Planning Commission at its January 2nd regular meeting recommended approval for cases EC 19.02 of the Long Branch subdivision for city council's consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this case.
Any questions for staff? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight on tonight's agenda is a final adoption of an ordinance to establish and adopt policies for abandoned and stolen personal property in the city of Fairhope Corporate Limits and its police jurisdiction, which was introduced at the March 25th city council meeting. Counsel, I'll remind you that the clerk had brought this to the attention and brought forth the new language, and this was introduced, so do you have any questions for the clerk in this regard? Okay, if I hear no questions for the clerk, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
For motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine on tonight's agenda is a final adoption of an ordinance to establish the bylaws of the city of Fairhope Building Code of Board of Appeals, which was introduced at the March 25th city council meeting. Mr. Cortinez had come up and briefed us on this. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cortinez at this point? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, I'm sorry, clerk, call the question.
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson has hereby authorized to execute a contract with Walcott Adams and Renewal Professional Architecture Services to assess repairs at the Welcome Center with a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. Sherri Lee had briefed us in the work session just prior to the council meeting. Does anybody have any questions for Sherri Lee? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 11 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to purchase a service truck for the mechanic department, the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama Department of Transportation Surplus Equipment List with a total cost not to exceed $25,000. I'm assuming you guys have already looked this up and seen that it's budgeted.
10,000 under.
10,000 under. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to approve ditch witch of Alabama as a sole source provider for the unbudgeted repair expenditure to replace the engine in a ditch witch for the utilities with a cost of $12,125. I believe this was brought up at the last work session. I'll entertain a motion for this cost.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So were we originally thinking we had to replace the whole thing? It's showing 181,000 under budget.
No, that's just the combined operating.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, it's unbudgeted.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, you do.
Okay, any further discussion, any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution to award a bid for food for Quail Creek 2019 for the golf department to American Wholesale Grocery doing business as American Foods of Mobile with a cost not to exceed the budgeted amount of $55,000. And I'll just say that this is bid on a per-unit basis, so that $55,000, you know, be plus or minus. I'll entertain a motion for this.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution, the city council adopt and approve the proposed rental rates for the Quail Creek clubhouse and patio for the Quail Creek golf course as presented. And you'll see that in your book, and I believe this should be exactly as we had discussed in the work session in the last council meeting date. I'll entertain a motion for this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm a little hesitant after what we discussed in the work session about increasing these rates, you know, what Jimmy brought to our attention about the Civic Center. I'd hate to get to that point with the clubhouse as well.
I don't think that they're exorbitant, and you know, some of those, the concerns are, like you said, à la carte. This is not an à la carte. It's pretty all-inclusive, and you know, once again, that was based on what, you know, some people heard. I actually talked to one of the Mardi Gras organizations, and they said they may expand their float barn and hold, because it's paid for, and have their ball there because they can afford to have it there, but they didn't say it was due to the expenses. I mean, they would, of course, save those expenses if they were to have it in their own property, but they didn't say it was specifically because of that, and I talked to the officer, one of the organizations, an officer of the organization, so I think it's something to think about, but we could also see how it goes, you know. The staff had recommended this, and I think we have to give it a shot, you know. Where do we stand on a motion?
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution of the Fairhope City Council. Let me also say, counsel, that the resolution in your book is not the proper one. It said all future leases. The correct resolution should say all future cell tower leases in the best interest for the city. Not trying to beat up anybody at all there until a city treasurer has been hired, so that's the resolution that you will be voting on, so I'll entertain a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Somebody want to second that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to approve Vermeer Southeast as a sole source provider for the unbudgeted repair expenditure to repair the Vermeer boring machine for the utilities at a cost of $15,263.68, and Mike had briefed us on this two weeks ago and then also earlier tonight, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for that expense.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Item seventeen is a resolution of City of Fairhope vote to procure the annual cathodic protection survey and native potential survey for the gas department from Allied Corrosion Industries with a total cost of fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And does anybody want to ask Terry any questions about this? I know that we didn't have a chance to get to that. I knew that it's just a thing that we have to periodically do, and it is budgeted, and it's coming in under budget. So somebody have any questions for the gas department? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for passage of this.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
I think that number is a, it's got a transposition error in it. It's supposed to be fourteen thousand eight forty.
That's what was actually written in the resolution, I think, releasing my copy.
Yeah, I, then I read the agenda. If the resolution is correct, we're good.
Resolution's fourteen eight forty.
Yeah, we're good then. Thank you for that, Jill. Okay. Item eighteen is a resolution the city council authorizes Mayor Wilson to submit a letter to the AMEA requesting three grants totaling twenty thousand dollars to be used for operating an entrepreneurial development center in partnership with Baldwin County, I'm sorry, Baldwin Community Economic Development Foundation, the five oh one C three Armored Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance and the University of Alabama, and space provided by and in conjunction with BBVA Compass Bank. This would be for the continuing operation of the Hatch in our city. I'll entertain a motion for this, please.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this, I know that y'all agreed to do the three years for this grant. Is it, this is the third and final?
Did, I don't know if we signed a three-year agreement with them.
I don't know if you signed it, but I think that's what was discussed.
I, I hadn't thought that far ahead, Mayor, to be honest with you.
I would, I would hope that more discussion about this economic impact grant can be discussed with our administration, my administration, because we want this to go towards, you know, things that will impact the many. And the original proposal that we sent in, not knowing that you had discussed this with Lee, was that we wanted it to go into the pedestrian safety and wayfinding downtown.
Well, we, I, I think that, you know, if we did take the grant money and then put it towards the pedestrian and wayfinding, we would probably find, have to find a way to use other funds from the city to, to support Hatch, because I believe that we're committed and we all agreed to the benefits of having Hatch in our city and that it was an economic impact. I think everybody hailed it as an economic impact.
I think that would be great, and then that money can be saved for other economic, you know, things for the masses. I mean, I, when we think about grant money, I would hope that we think about what's good for many, and in this case, I fully support Hatch, but I think it needs to be an appropriation, just like it is to the, the rest of the things that we support.
Well, by spending this grant money, it frees up money in the budget to be used for whatever it is, pedestrian safety. It's a, it's a six and one, half dozen the other the way I see it. Where do we stand on the, we already voted on that?
You have a motion and a second.
Pardon?
You have a motion and a second.
Have a motion and a second, council. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item nineteen is a resolution that the pay grades for the building department be revised and approved in the compensation and job classification plan as recommended by the personnel board. And those are provided, the current and proposed, you'll see in your binder or in your, on your MacBook, along with the pay. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to change the pay grades in the compensation and job classification plan.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item twenty is a resolution that certain items are declared surplus in the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department, is authorized and directed to dispose of the personal property purchased by the City of Fairhope for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department by donating such property to needy fire departments that could use the equipment. I think we've been discussing this for a couple of weeks now. This was discussed in the last work session. Why, did we not vote on this once already?
The others were donated to the school. These are going to the fire department. This is the remainder.
Oh, okay, so this is the balance. It is a totally new resolution. I thought we had voted on this. So there would be twelve self-contained breathing apparatuses and thirty-four spare air bottles.
Correct.
Okay. And that's allowed, we're allowed to be able to give those away? They don't have to be put on a gov.
No, they're allowed to be donated to other needy fire departments.
Okay. All right, council. I'll entertain a motion to declare them surplus and donate them to needy fire departments.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Next item is an update to the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department. If you see the list, the roster there, do we have to approve this?
Yes, you do for workers' comp.
Okay. You'll see the personnel listed in items one through fifty-two. Any questions about any of those? Anybody want to reduce it, add to it tonight? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the volunteer fireman roster as presented.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number twenty-two, recommendations by the recreation board. There's number one, an appointment of Corey Martin to the rec board. Number two, there's an acceptance of a franchise agreement for Bruce Cuddy for pickleball instruction at the rec center and the Mike Four tennis center at Stimson Park. And number three, a reappointment of Michelle Smith to the rec board. Counsel, we can accept all of these in one resolution, or if you want to single one out, we can do it that way. The way we have it written right now is that we would pass all of these in one motion. They also had a fourth item.
The five-year plan.
The five-year plan that they wanted to be put on here, and I thought it would be a bad idea to adopt a five-year plan that we hadn't had time to, to look at and ask them to come to the next work session and present that five-year plan. So, y'all forgive me for pulling that from the agenda.
Also, council president, I'd like to say that the franchise agreement has to be adopted by ordinance, therefore it will be on the April twenty-second agenda also.
Okay, so we can't accept item number two there anyway. That's correct. So the recommendations are the appointments of Corey Martin and Michelle Smith to the rec board.
Which is number twenty-three.
Which is number twenty-three. So I'll entertain a motion for item number twenty-three to accept the nominees for a four-year term.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, appointments are made. Item twenty-four, this is another item in which there were several recommendations passed by the Street and Traffic Control Committee. Number one was an all-way stop being installed at the intersection of Manly Road and Founders Drive. Number two, an all-way stop being installed at the intersection of Manly Road and Ayden Street. Number three, a raised crosswalk to be installed on Manly Road in the proximity of Kemper Lane. Number four, two to three speed calming devices to be installed on Summer Lake Street with a place to be determined by the Summer Lake Homeowners Association with input from the Public Works. Two-speed calming devices to be installed on Perdido Avenue, and up to two-speed calming devices to be installed on Vivian Loop in the Southland Place subdivision. We do have Chief Hollinghead here who chairs that committee if you want to answer questions. I also sit on that committee. I'll tell you that in, in all instances, if they're, they want a speed calming device, that's something more than to bolt the down strip. The citizens that asked for it would have to pay for it. Also, that all of these requests were accompanied by the appropriate petitions that had to come along with that. So we had a fairly lengthy Street and Traffic Control Committee. So if you have any questions about any of these, if you want to pull one of these out, we could, we could table any or all of these, or we could pass all of these. Chief, was there anything here? I don't think that any of those were opposed by the Street and Traffic Committee at all. Is there any of these you think you should expand on?
No, sir. This was all business that had been lingering for a while, so I think.
Right, there were, and there were other, there were several other items that were brought up in this meeting, in which we asked the police to go out and perform further study, traffic counts, speed. They go out and measure the number of cars and the speed of cars passing, and it's kind of the most common. Also say that Mr. Johnson, Mr. Richard Johnson of Public Works, pretty well-versed in, you know, when you choose stop signs, when you choose speed calming devices, and all of that was discussed. I know that there are some, some other locations around town. I've seen some email exchanges back and forth, but I don't believe that any of those are on tonight's agenda. They've been sent back to the police for further study. Any questions, council?
Yeah, I meant to get down Manly Road today, but didn't have a chance. Chief, you don't mind, or Richard, somebody, just seems like a lot of stop signs there on Manly Road. Is that going to be more detrimental to school traffic than, or achieving what needs to be achieved? I mean, how close are those together and?
Good, very good questions. Councilman Brown, all these were brought up in that committee, and I'm going to let...
And I will tell you, there, there was a, a good bit of discussion, because we had, we had quite a few that, that Manly Road were, were concerned about, including our Summer Lakes, as well as those from Southland Place. And the consensus, Manly Road's almost a mile long between Greeno and County Road Thirteen, and it just works out that the intersection of Ayden is basically at the one-quarter mark between, from County Road Thirteen heading west. Founders is almost at the halfway mark, and we have a tap grant that's going to be completing the sidewalk on Manly Road to Founders or to the middle school, and there's a crosswalk already planned for there at Kemper, and it was suggested that we make it a raised crosswalk that is almost at the three-quarter mark. So they will be spaced almost equally across that mile. Considering that the queuing of traffic for schools, I don't think it's going to have any negative effect, but it will, at least at the all-way stop conditions, allow those folks an opportunity to turn out on the road, where a lot of times they're not afforded that opportunity because the queue has passed through the, the intersection and there's no ability to turn out. So at least if it's all-way stop, you wait your turn and you'll be able to make the left turn or, or try to attempt a right turn if you're trying to get into school traffic. So I, I don't think it's perfect, but I think it's about as good as, as the committee and, and satisfy the request the citizens could achieve.
Good questions. It's tough. It's a tough call for that.
Man, I just wonder, if you got the raised crosswalk, that's going to slow traffic down some, you know, would that allow them to, to enter Manly Road at that? I'm just talking through here, I'm not a traffic expert.
Yeah, one of the issues also, and forgive me, Mr. Johnson, if you said some of this, because I was reading my agenda and trying to, trying to manage the meeting at the same time I was listening to you two, but some of this has to do with the fact that on Founders Drive, you, it is almost impossible to get out of Founders Drive in the mornings. You just simply can't, and it's diverting traffic through Summer Lake, and you have a lot of that going on because the, because of the amount of traffic that's flowing to the school. And I think it's a really good question to ask. Do you try, do you put stop signs up there to solve twice a day, thirty to, thirty to forty-five minutes, maybe an hour at the most, the traffic a day? I think it's a very fair and good question to ask if you're thinking that. But, you know, the, the consensus was that we, we should, should try it out, and that they were spaced far enough apart that it really wouldn't slow traffic down. Is that correct, Chief? I see you in a green.
I, I think it's the, you know, and, and I understand the good news, the one thing I like about all-way stops, that if, if it comes to be a decision that we regret, it's very easy to reverse, as opposed to a speed bump that you've got to take a jackhammer to.
Well, the other thing was that the speed, the stop signs are not meant to be traffic calming devices. In other words, the stop signs are not being placed there to slow people down. They're there to regulate.
Access.
Access.
Yeah, the turning movement. That's, they, they just say at certain times of day, and I've been out there, you just can't pull out, because either the, the intersection is queued with, with cars waiting to get into the school, or there's so much volume that there's no gap to get out. So that, you know, and, and there's definitely more traffic on Manly Road than any of the intersection roads, so.
Any, any more questions for anyone? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. If not, I will entertain a motion to accept these recommendations from the Street and Traffic Control Committee.
So moved.
Have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item twenty-five was a request of Casey Callaway from Mobile Bay Hipping, requesting permission to block the streets and use the park on the south end of the pier and North Beach Road. The Bayfront Park pier and the fountain area for the twenty eighteen, I bet that's supposed to be twenty nineteen, Publix Grand Anthroline on May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. So they would close the Rose Garden on May thirty-first, no later than five PM, and on June the first, close the road entering North Bayfront Park from five AM until the last racer finishes. The use of barricades and permission to serve beer on the South Beach Park with all appropriate[1560.62] The use of barricades and permission to serve beer on the South Beach Park with all appropriate security after the race. But I will say that they are, they are going to be paying for that according to their application. And also requesting permission to block streets and North Mobile Street and North Beach Road. The use of the park on the south end of the pier and the use of the barricades for Jubilee Kids Triathlon on June 2, 2019, from 6:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. On June the 1st, we'll close the Rose Garden, no later than 7:00 p.m., and on June 2nd, close the road entering North Bayfront Park from 5:00 a.m. until the last racer finishes. Now that was a mouthful, counsel. If you have any questions about that, you're going to have to ask Chief Hollinghead here. I think this is pretty analogous to what we've done in the past, and you can see the applications, see the fees that they are paying. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to grant the request.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 26 is an application for a restaurant liquor license by Paige Dawson for the Fairhope Inn Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as the Fairhope Inn, located at 63 South Church Street. Chief Hollinghead, everything's in order. Do you see any reason to deny this application?
No, it's everything's fine.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Sketchy references they put on there.
All right, hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Did I hear somebody, did somebody ask?
I was just going to wish the new owners luck.
Okay, yeah, good luck. Item 27 is another application for a restaurant liquor license by Jorge Torres for JTS USA Incorporated, doing business as Lost Tacos, located at 1970 South Greeno Road. Chief?
No, sir, this one's fine, sir.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 28 was added to tonight's agenda. I'll read the resolution. It says, be it resolved by the governing body of this City of Fairhope, that Mayor Karen Wilson is authorized to execute the contract for geotechnical testing services and engineering services for electrical transformer relocation site at Nichols Avenue and Young Street at a cost of $2,760. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street. I have a concern, across from Ace Hardware, is new buildings went up and they put parking out front. And I was wondering, did we approve that parking so that the big trucks or just big cars are going to be sticking out in the road? And even if we didn't, can we do something about that before somebody has a wreck?
Is there a, is there a staff member that can answer that question right offhand? I know, I'm certain that we approved the site plan, or it would have been built according to that.
Yeah, that's for the portico. Yeah, we did approve the site plan, but I don't know that that included the size of the parking spots, and I've seen pictures of what you're talking about, and on some of those, it does create a serious issue.
It was my big.
Would we not be obligated if someone had a wreck or held accountable?
It's going to be, I think it's set up right now for a disaster, and I definitely voiced that when this was up for approval.
It looks like to me, because I went and looked at it, if we could just move the walk in, give more room for the car to pull in, it would solve the problem.
It's still going to be.
Yeah. I think counsel, although all we can do at this point is ask the mayor to ask the staff to look into that and make sure they're.
I already have. I mean, it was approved through the normal process, so it would have to be looked at again. I mean, it was definitely went through all the whole process.
What are the liability issues that we have, Mr. McDowell?
There's a regulation as far as parking size. I'm sure it meets the regulated parking. It's the same distance as the parking spots downtown.
We expanded the.
I mean, I understand the location of it, you know, caused some concern.
A lot of faster traffic.
It's faster, for sure.